Have, is this? That answers that question. Okay. So, shall we start, Karen? You're muted. Okay. All right.
I'm looking for the court reporter.
Okay.
Yeah.
That founder.
We can begin, Claudia.
Let me just move her over, please.
Okay, no problem. Excuse my, turning my head, I have a second monitor here and I'm reading from the second monitor and watching on this one.
Lisa, can you hear us?
Excuse me?
Lisa?
Oh.
Yes, I'm here.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's start. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on May 26, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meeting, Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been prominently posted, has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Since such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on May 21, 2021, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, the Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed by the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board in the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Okay, so Claudia, can you call a roll?
Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Shriver?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Valvani? Ms. Chen?
Here.
Stein?
Here. Okay.
Owen. Thank you. I see you.
The new member, Donna Diana.
I'm sorry, Donna Diana.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two resolutions this evening, which were in your packet. The first one is 35 to 37 South Harrison Street, Block 5201, Lot 102 in the R3 Zone. It is case number 64HP-2020. This memo, this resolution was revised and distributed by Karen, the revised memo this afternoon, and everybody should have gotten it. And I believe Karen highlighted the change in yellow on the revised resolution.
Yeah, that would be at the end of paragraph four on page two. The sentence was incomplete. It should have continued to say without requiring the owner to go back to the HPC for review. And under public comment, I just added after Mr. Zink's name, Princeton, New Jersey. So those were the changes that we had to that resolution.
Has, have the members had an opportunity to review it? If you have, and there are no comments from any of the members, if somebody'd like to make a resolution, like to make a motion.
So moved.
We have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Claudia?
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did you call? Did you call my name, Claudia?
Yeah, I was calling George.
Okay.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the second resolution is 15 to 17 Edwards Place, Block 41.01, Lots 62 and 63 in the R4 Zone, Mercer Hill HD, and its case number Z20-919.
Um, board members, I had two revisions to suggest. Looking, okay, on page two, it's the second full paragraph under the testimony of Rabbi Webb. His wife's name was misspelled. It should be Giddy, G-I-T-T-Y, not Getty. And then on paragraphs seven, in the findings at the very end now, and the conditions, there is a sentence which should be reviewed or part of it. It begins just before paragraph eight, "The board also grants a variance for the proposed," and that was meant to refer to the sign, but that is addressed later in the resolution in paragraph 10. So those are the changes I would suggest, aside from any other revisions that the board members would like to make.
Thank you. Board members, any comments? If not, a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you. Claudia?
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
I don't see that I was on that.
No, you probably should have been, so let's see.
Yes, you were there.
Yeah.
Then we'll make sure we add you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make sure. We just added you now.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Coulson wasn't there.
So yes.
Correct, got it, okay.
And I guess Mr. Stein is still not here, right? Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more resolution. I only thought about two. We have one more resolution. It's 304 Ewing Street, Block 7305, Lot 5 in the R8 Zone, and its application Z20-887. Any revisions to that, Karen?
No.
Okay, comments from the board, questions, modifications? If none, a resolution, a motion?
Let's see, we can go three for three.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Claudia?
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to the applications. We have, we have three this evening. The first one on our list is 51 and 85 Mason Drive, Block 7804, Lots 1 and 6 in the R5 Zone, and its case is C21-041. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. How are you?
Okay. Turn your, turn your volume up a little bit, Chris.
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I have a few people, if we could bring them in, Tom O'Shea.
Okay.
Eunice Wong. And Kathy Ailes. I think that's it. Tom, am I missing anybody? Is that it? Yeah, I'm mute.
It's gonna be a long meeting if I'm on mute. No, Eunice and myself, I think we're good.
Okay.
Do we get Kathy? I don't see.
Kathy and Richard are also.
Okay, great. Excellent.
Do you want to swear everybody in at one time?
Sure. Well, let me first note that the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction. I didn't know if you would like to have Mr. Bridger first review his memorandum before Mr. Degracia begins his presentation.
That would be, that would be appropriate.
All right, and Mr. Bridger will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Subject property United is 51 and 85 Mason Drive. The owners are Richard Levine and Kathy Ailes. They're seeking a C2 variance to permit construction of two separate driveways where only one is permitted. Subject lot is complying with all the bulk regulations located in the R5 Zone in the former Princeton Township. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The applicant recently purchased the adjoining lot at 51 Mason's Drive and received approval to construct an accessory structure on the lot. The existing single-family dwelling on 51 Mason's Drive has been demolished. The accessory structure will contain an accessory dwelling unit, a two-car garage, a squash court, and workout area, and an indoor pool. The lots will be consolidated. The applicant's current design reflects a horseshoe driveway that provides access to the house at 85 in the AD accessory structure. The applicant is seeking variance relief so that each building may be served by its own independent driveway, where Section 7 or 10B 255.2I1 permits only one driveway per lot. The applicant has requested consideration under the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Degracia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Christopher Degracia from the law firm of Fegery, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath. Here on behalf of the applicant, Richard Levine, Kathy Ailes, they're husband and wife, long-term residents of the municipality, and they would like to stay a lot longer as well. They, as Derek Bridger indicated, they're in the Riverside section on a street called Mason Drive. Their house is at 85 Mason Drive, and they've purchased the neighboring lot, which is 51 Mason Drive. They've submitted and have approval to build an accessory structure that was described by Derek Bridger, which is focused basically on health and athletics, like he said, a pool, gym. But we're really not here to talk about the accessory structure. Everything conforms, their proposed plan fully conforms. What we're here is to request a variance because our proposed approved plan requires this very large driveway that connects the two existing driveways. And there's really no reason to build that driveway. It doesn't serve any real purpose. It creates additional impervious, it creates more disturbance. We have to cut down additional trees. So we're here tonight to get relief so we don't have to build something. So it's kind of an interesting application. But we'll get into detail, show you some slides. We have a little presentation. But as you take a look at it, you'll see exactly what we're talking about. Aesthetics plays a huge role here. So the approved plan, although fully compliant, creates this driveway, a U driveway, that we really don't think is necessary. And from an aesthetic standpoint, we want to keep that area open and green. It better fits in with the character of the neighborhood, and you'll get to see that in a little bit. So I think I'd like to start. Tom, are you gonna pull up the exhibit, or do you want me to?
I have it, Chris.
Okay, great. So I think we'll start with Tom O'Shea. Why don't you share your screen so we can see?
Mr. Degracia, do you want to swear in all your witnesses now?
That's a good idea.
Okay, so that would be Mr. O'Shea and Ms. Wong and Ms. Ailes, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. If you would, I'll raise your right hand. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, you were sworn in, but I think we would like to get you qualified.
For, I'm Tom O'Shea, a partner at Van Ode Harvey Associates.
Excuse me one second. Tom has testified before us many, many times, more than qualified.
Thank you very much. Tom, your license is still current?
Still current.
All right, thank you. So if you could share your screen, we can mark this. This is a PowerPoint presentation. I think we have eight slides, and we can mark this as Exhibit A1. And just to orient the board, you are looking at Mason Drive here. To the left is the existing dwelling, which is 85 Mason Drive. To the, to the right is the 51 Mason Drive, and that's the building that has, actually has already been demolished, and they're in the process of grading there to start the vertical building of the accessory structure. So if you take a look at this picture, what we are actually asking is relief from connecting the two driveways. So you see the two existing curb cuts, the two existing driveways. And your code requires, allows only one opening unless it's a U-shaped driveway. So we have to actually build the driveway over that great green area in the middle in order to conform with the code. So we're requesting relief so we don't have to build that. And Tom, I think if you can take us through the presentation, that would be great.
Well, Chris, you made it, you made it easy. So again, this, this picture is really terrific. So this is Mason Drive. This is 85, and this is 51. Just keep in mind the trees in this zone right here. Let me go to the next slide. So as Chris said, pursuant to the ordinance, we're allowed one driveway opening, and there is a provision that if we have a U-shaped drive, we can preserve our two driveway entrances out on Mason Drive. Seeking a variance approval only for providing two individual driveways and not connect the U driveway. The plan you will see will be less impervious surface. It will be more visually pleasing along the frontage of Mason Drive, saving the existing trees and green space. So prior to the start of this, we had two individual lots. The lots have already been consolidated. The lots are approximately a half an acre each. Combined, it's a little bit over one acre. Again, existing drives shown on the site. The site plan, as approved for zoning, fully compliant, shows the accessory structure. The accessory structure has a accessory dwelling unit in it, but for the most part, it's for health and fitness with a swim area as well as exercise facilities. The garage is located at this location. First of all, very interesting client that they really are pushing sustainability for the site. And as you can see, we're showing bio retention swales around the building. The loop road that, or the loop drive is right here, connecting the existing drive and again preserving the existing driveway opening. The construction of this loop drive would be through the green area, and if we don't connect the two, we'll be able to save a number of the trees in this location.
And so, Tom, just to be clear, that is the plan that is currently being constructed? It's the plan that was previously approved by permit, correct?
If that is correct. This is fully compliant and was approved through the zoning permit process at the municipality.
And the stormwater goes well beyond. I'm not even sure if we triggered it here or if it was.
Yeah, so, so what I can tell you about stormwater is, under this plan, there is an increase in impervious surface of approximately 730 square feet, I think the number. 738 square feet. The stormwater management system for the site is providing biofiltration swales, treating runoff from the building. Would pick up a portion of the driveway, and it's treating water that comes from the site, from the residences on Mason Drive. It's directing the water to a drainage pipe which crosses at this location. And again, it gets picked up at this location. With the biofiltration and retention, we are infiltrating some of the water, so we're taking advantage of infiltration as well.
Thank you, Tom, and just.
Green roof on this portion of the building. It's approximately 1,080 square feet. And on the existing 85 house, we're using rain barrels that don't exist right now to help irrigate gardens and vegetated areas.
And I believe another sustainable measure is geo exchange being proposed.
Terrific. So going above and beyond what we're providing for are seven geo boars that will use, instead of combustibles, it will use the cooling and heating in-ground to the building. This location, even though it's a two-car garage, part of that space is used for the equipment to heat or the building throughout that location. This is the plan before you that we're asking for the variance. Again, you can see underneath the existing driveway, we're eliminating the loop road or loop driveway that connects the two, and we just have a ribbon driveway connecting to the garage of the building. This plan reduces the impervious surface, 238, by approximately 340 square feet. And our disturbance, we're reducing the disturbance by about 2,000 square feet roughly, and not connecting the drive.
So, Tom, can you just flip back and forth again, just so they can compare the first, I'm sorry, yeah, this one is the approved plan, and then what we're proposing, so you could see the driveway, and that's what we're proposing. I think the loop is something in the neighborhood of 522 square feet, and we're down to 180 here, square feet. Something like that.
And again, we're keeping all the same elements as far as sustainable design. And what's, what's nice about this, and we've got some graphics on the landscaping, and Eunice Wong can speak about that a little bit. Not having this drive-through here, we're not cutting off the site. So the vegetated and biofiltration swell runs all the way through the property. You know, as I, as I kind of referred to it, is we have the compliant plan, but this is a much better plan. I just want to flip to the landscape concept here. And what we can see here, and Eunice can get into it in much more detail, and she will.
Tom, just for the record, this is Sheet Six we're on now?
That's correct. Sheet Six in the slide, and it's showing the proposed accessory structure with the garage, higher bay, and it shows the green roof at this location. And it's showing how the stormwater management works its way around the site, and it shows the connection, and it shows the saving of the existing trees in this location, which is big. Just, just for some of the variance issues, I just want to touch upon them. The better plan is really specific to this property. It's specific because it's a consolidated lot, it's a larger lot, and we're preserving two existing driveways. With the plan, we don't think that the purpose of the zoning or municipal land use law is, it is being advanced, that we don't think that it is detrimental to that. As far as if the variance is granted, we, we don't think that there will be a substantial detriment to the public good. Again, the only difference is, is that we're not creating the loop road and we're saving vegetation. It's a better plan. And we think that the benefits of not having this loop in here with vehicles parking on it alongside the road and the drive, we think that the benefits far outweigh the detriment. So those are some of the zoning issues, but I'd like to share with you, and Eunice can talk a little bit about the landscape plan and the concept.
Ready?
Yes, so Eunice, can you give us a little bit, you've been sworn in already, can you give us a little bit about your qualifications?
Yeah, so I'm a landscape designer at a small studio called Land and Studio, based in Lambertville, New Jersey. I graduated from the Masters of Landscape Architecture Program in 2017 from the Harvard Graduate School of Design and have been working in various offices in B.C. and in the U.S. and in France since I graduated. I've been working on this project closely with the architects, with Richard and Kathy, with Thomas O'Shea, and geotechnical suite of professionals since September 2020. And I think I'll just add a little bit from a landscape perspective so that the board gets a sense of the stakes of this variance request. So back to the site plan, this shows the two separate driveways that we're requesting a variance for. The single-story dwelling, Tom already had us oriented at the bottom of the screen, the ADU at the top with the green roof at the back of the structure, and then in the light blue, the two bio swales, which intend to allow water to infiltrate rather than simply whisking it away, which is really, the theme from the landscape side of this project, is really about restoring the capacity of the ground to hold water, to filter runoff. And that makes the site really interesting because of the existing inlet that, right there at Mason Drive, and the local topography. The, all of the runoff from this contiguous block passes through this part of the site between the two buildings. And so I'd like to argue that the approved loop driveway that would have to connect between these two existing curb cuts not only impact the neighborhood on a visual, aesthetic, experiential level, but it also affects the larger local and municipal stormwater network. Because all of the runoff coming through has to pass through this area, anything we can do to improve or restore the capacity of the soil to absorb, hold, or make use. Anything we can do to improve or restore the capacity of the soil to absorb, hold or make use of water is a relief on the municipal. System and anything you can do to filter the water coming through this way honestly as well. So how we're going to do this is replacing the sod planting that is currently there, no more mowing, thus thus no compaction. No artificial irrigation where we have a planting pallet. That comprises a diverse root system of native plantings suited to the conditions. And all this works together to build the soil health through an annual program of mulching, prioritizing beautiful vegetative cover. So that the ground can just do what it. So the next slide. So the driveway option that is permissible through the zoning ordinance, the one that was approved. And so this would necessitate covering over that, covering over the swale and this crucial juncture. Between the local landscape and the municipal stormwater network. There's a significant elevational difference between the existing curb cuts, so it entails a certain amount of fill. And more importantly impedes our efforts to improve infiltration in this area. Decreases the potential benefit of relief to the municipal stormwater system. And requires the removal of four about fifty foot tall trees, which are shown on the next slide. The four trees in question, the red maple on the left, three large pines on the right. Existing junipers at the base of the maple there and beautiful bottle brush buckeyes flourishing at the entrance of the A D U.
Thank you, so one of the things that. You know, like I said, aesthetics plays a huge part of this as well. And you could see how the small protrusion for the driveway that we're proposing. Really is from that to the proposal, which is what you are looking at today. So slip forward to the next one if you can. This, if you look at it, really falls, as I said, into the character of the neighborhood. You know, from a streetscape, you're seeing the the separation with all of the beautiful landscaping, you're seeing the single drive. Going to it and it really plays almost like a single family home would, which is in character with the neighborhood. So when you're on the street, this is certainly something that matches the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Where the 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 conforming clan that we would have to build if we didn't get the variance. Is really jarring, it just seems very out of place. And as we gone through more impervious, more disturbance, more tree removal, there's really no reason to it, to do it. Other than to just comply with the ordinance and in this particular case where we have this. This curve and the way the properties layout, there's really no reason to build it and that's why we're here this evening.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In the in the original scheme in the plan. It has the two, the two strips wheel. Again, it did, it didn't show, well, it did show, I guess, a connect, a driveway. Going into the garage with a turnaround. And then the the two, I guess I'll call them strips of of paving. And and in this revised scheme, obviously that's eliminated. The landscaping has been much improved, but there are two, is it practical? To have those two basically wheel strips in there, I don't even know what you'd call them. With with what's going to be in between them and. Is it practical to think you can drive in and back out that direction without? Without having any more paved area in there? I mean, it's it's, that's going to be pretty tricky, isn't it?
Steve, it's the width of those strips are a few feet. The attention was given such that we were not increasing impervious surface. And this driveway will not be a heavily used driveway, it just gives us the ability to make that connection. So you know, that that is the thought there. We think that it's wide enough, but we'll also have stabilized turf on either side. It will read as green, but if you do deviate from from the wheel strips, the ground can support the vehicles.
You've got to, you've got to back out of the garage to the street in that?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I.
The the goal was to provide the stabilized area to drive on so that it reads as green. And that if if we drive off the strips a little bit, we're we're driving on the stabilized turf.
I I don't, I mean, I, how much, how much would you be increasing the impervious coverage? If you, I'm sorry about that, how much would you be increasing the impervious coverage if you paved that area between the two?
And we'd be increasing it by about four hundred square feet, four to five hundred square feet.
And does that, that brings you over the impervious requirement?
It it would bring us very close to it. It would bring us over for the for the combined lot where we're. That number, the twenty two point five percent for the combined lot. I'll tell you, we'll be over by about two hundred square feet.
But I I guess it's, I understand that, I just, from a practical standpoint, I don't think it's, it really is. It's going to end up being, it's going to end up being compacted. And it's going to end up being used as part of the driveway. I I think it's impractical to assume that especially in the winter time and it may be covered or at night. You're, it it's just going to be a hard path to follow. I don't have a problem leaving it the way you proposed it. And but I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be impractical, in my opinion. To think that that's going to work, function properly. So that was my only comment, that's fine.
It's a two car garage.
I think though, excuse me, I do think though, that the two individual driveways rather than the connection is a better solution.
So can I ask a question, are those two individual driveways or is that one wheels, is that basically for one car to go into one bay?
It's a double door, but half the space is taken for equipment and storage. It's intended for one, one vehicle.
It's just basically a single car, an oversized single car garage.
Yeah.
Right.
But with two doors.
It's a single door, it's a wide door, I think you can get a sense of it.
Oh, then, okay.
Yeah, it's it's one.
And obviously in the in the loop scheme, go back to the other one, please. In the in the loop scheme, there was a connection into the garage. Or was there not?
But not showing. There there was not.
No, you have to park in front and walk.
There was, there was not a connection from that loop drive into the into the garage of, is it fifty one?
That's that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the design was to try to cut down on impervious as much as possible.
Yeah, but you can.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's, I hate to say water under the bridge at this point, but yeah, okay. I think, as I said before, I think the the two drive solution in my opinion is a, is a better way to go.
Yeah, I agree with that. Can I ask another question, is there, is there a path from the back of the primary residence, like through and over the swale to the. To the accessory structure or are they going to have to walk on the street or they're going to drive from the house over to the accessory structure?
Well, I I would say they wouldn't drive. Could walk their, the vegetated area, absolutely could walk or walk along this the street.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's hard to see exactly what the topography is like between the two, but I could imagine you could make an. You know, even large stepping stone or a stone bridge over the swale or something, I don't know, I can't see. But it'd be nice to be able to walk through the garden to the accessory structure versus having to go to the street and around.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, how how far off the street is the accessory structure?
Forty four feet on the front.
Forty four feet, okay. The second question is, is there, is there any architectural connection between the two buildings? There isn't, is there?
No.
So there's no reason why they should necessarily be connected by a driveway, you know, it looks like they're. Part of the same property. Okay.
Yep.
And I agree with James, I was trying to figure out how are they going to get from one house to one place to the other. If the other accessory is a workout room. Seems like I need an underground tunnel or something. I support this idea.
Yeah.
The whole idea is walking is healthy. They have to walk a little, unfortunately, but.
It's nice to walk through the garden versus on the street, though, yes.
Yeah.
If you want to see on the rendered plan, Tom, on slide six, there are stepping stones shown. When you cross this well.
No, okay, I was, I was looking at that, I couldn't quite tell what they were depicting, yes, okay.
From the backyard, you could cross over on the stepping stones and connect through the back way.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but yeah, it what didn't, I couldn't quite make it up from that picture, but that that seems like a great way to go.
I guess the only other thing that I was going to say is. I I'm going to have to lean towards. And and Karen in. If. If we were to do a driveway instead of wheel strips and and I'm not speaking on behalf of the owner, I'm just asking the question. Would the board support the variance for the increase in impervious surface?
Are you asking me, could they do that tonight?
Yes.
I believe you're noticing. Contain the standard clause, which says, you know, if there's any additional variances, you know, the they should be deemed as being noticed. So I wouldn't have a problem with that if that's what the board would like to do tonight.
Again, I'm speaking out of turn, I just wanted to ask procedurally.
I mean, I'm generally, I I'm in favor generally of the of the proposal. But I agree with Stephen Cohen that, you know, that that area is going to be compacted. So even though it's called out as being pervious surface, it will, it will become impervious de facto. So whether we want to pave it or it's just going to be, you know, grass pave or something, that's probably what you'd use. It probably will become impervious anyway, so I think. We could, we could look at, so we could call it impervious.
So so Kathy, Richard, can you just unmute for a second there? So we're talking about possibly paving a portion of the area in between to make it a more of a typical driveway. And I just wanted to get your feeling, I know that you guys have been very meticulous with this plan. And I I wanted to get your your feedback. One of the the part, the tough things about Zoom is I'm not next to my client all the time and I can't really talk to them. So do you guys, you've heard what we've been talking about, do you have an opinion on that?
Sure, for for thirty seven years, we've been living at eighty five Mason. And for those thirty seven years, we've been backing out to the street. Because we don't have any turning radius in our our existing driveway. So in terms of our capability. We were comfortable with the revised plan that we're submitting for variance. With regard to widening the the driveway that would be going straight into the A D U. I appreciate that Tom O'Shea is asking his question, it's a logical question to ask. If we were to receive dispensation to widen it within the two, between the two ribbons. I I just want to say, I'm not sure at tonight's meeting that we would take. Advantage of it, we might use, not do it, because we're very, very concerned about. All issues of. You know, the, our whole integrated stormwater management system. So. You know, I don't want to look, I don't want to say no, but I I I want to reserve the possibility that we get. A yes and we don't use it.
So essentially, you want to study it to make sure that switching it or adding it doesn't have any negative impact. From a stormwater perspective, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Tom, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I I would say that the the stormwater system that. We worked with Eunice, but Eunice really conceived goes above and beyond. And the small increase in impervious surface would would not be an issue with the stormwater system here. And I I would say that. You know, you you heard Richard's statement is they're pretty. They like the design, I think the only ask is if it becomes an issue, it gives them a flexibility to to widen it. But I think the intention is to build it as shown on the plan, am I right, Richard?
Yeah.
Correct.
You know, if it's only forty four feet, it's only forty four feet, that's only four car lengths, that's not so, it's a long distance to be backing up.
Can I ask a question, I'm having a hard time graphically reconciling that if the. If the approved plan. Impervious coverage and that. Right, that ribbon driveway looks so much longer, how could it be that? The one that is being proposed that requires a variance is is that tight to the limit of impervious coverage? I mean, I I guess the calculations have been done, it's it's just, it's hard to.
Square footage difference is three hundred and forty one square feet. So if if you fill in the driveway, I think you're above the three forty one.
I think I can add to that, I think because if you, if you fill in the full driveway, then there are requirements for the minimum. With at the property line and then at the garage as well, which throws us over a little bit. So it would, it wouldn't be just filling in the middle, but I think there was a, there's, or unless Derek, that doesn't apply to us anymore because it's an A D U.
Yeah, the 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 standard driveway might be something on the order of twelve feet wide. Versus the four to six feet wide. And it it would flare out at both ends, Eunice, so it would put it in a variance condition. Not, but it would.
Steve, I think you're on mute, if you're. If you were talking, it looked like.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's it's up to you, what what you, the plan that you propose. If you'd like us to vote on that, that's, you know, your call, Tom, and and your your clients, the homeowners and. But it, this is suggestion on our part and. So.
So Richard.
Your your decision, I I I do think the stormwater management system is is very nice. I mean, it preserves a lot and the landscaping will remain in there, which is commendable, so.
So I just wanted to address the question about the driveway width, the minimum driveway width is eight feet. So. If that works. From and there's, if it needs to be flared out at the garage, there's no requirement for that, but. It works better from a practice point of view.
Yeah.
So so as the owners, I would say that we would accept a vote on filling in. Between the two ribbon. Drive pathways, except that we. except that we don't wanna prejudice our application for the variance as we've presented it. So in other words, if, if.
So if the board does not support, if the whole board does not support putting the increase in pervious, we would, we would like an alternative vote on the current plan.
Correct.
So in other words, if you leave it the way you proposed it, if we approve it with that center area paved and you don't do it, I mean, that's, that's your call.
But it, but also, also if we ask you to vote on it and the board does not vote in favor, we don't want to lose our standing of our current, uh, variance application.
Could, could you do it as two votes? Votes on, vote on the plan as currently and then vote on the widening?
It's up to you. We, 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 I mean, that's up to, I guess Karen, what do you think about that?
Uh, I, I think you can. I guess it's, it's, uh, it's not clear to me which way the applicant wants to go, so.
Exactly.
So, so Richard, if the board, let me put it this way. If the board's in favor of granting you the variance because they feel that having a, the solid driveway without the pavers inside is a better option in terms of, um, access and, and whatever. Are you okay with that? Is that, is that, right, is that okay? And then, and then I guess we can move away from there. If some board members are not in favor of granting that additional variance, then we can ask them to take a look at what we're proposing right now.
Okay, yes.
I guess we're not, we're not trying to force you into paving that situation. We can vote on it the way it is. I mean, it's, you know, we don't need the complicated. But, you know, from a practical standpoint, it may end up becoming impervious coverage anyway, but that's, that's your call.
Good point. We understand and we, we, we are saying yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have any other witnesses?
No, that, that's it.
You wanna, uh, you wanna say anything else before we, I open it up to the board for questions?
No, I, I, I think we pretty much covered everything, um, and, and what we wanna do, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, all right. Are there anybody, any board members that'd like to comment, question what's going on?
Steve, there's, um, someone Hayden Smith who raised their hand, and I don't know why. I don't know.
Well, we, we'll have the, we'll have the public portion after the board comments, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I, I guess that's why, yeah.
Okay. So any board members like to comment on this? Ask questions of the applicant or the witnesses? Anyone? Okay, all right. Um, hearing no comments from the board, I'll, uh, open up the public portion of the meeting. And Eve, is there anybody there who wants to question anything?
I'm gonna guess that Hayden Smith wants to say something, but I don't know. We'll find out. I'm gonna promote Hayden Smith to panelist. And oh, gosh.
How many people do we have who've raised their hands?
Just about one person.
One person, okay.
Um, now I don't know what happened to that person. There, okay. Um, I have.
Okay.
I'm muted, I think.
Yeah, I just, I mean, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Smith, we need to get your address and then we just need to swear you in. So if you could give us your address, please?
Thirty-two Wee Chief Lane. And I raised my hand by mistake. It was, um, I have a comment about the application for forty-four Wee Chief.
Okay, well, then we'll talk to you then. How about that?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Eve, that, uh, wants to speak to this application?
It doesn't look like it to me. I don't see anybody's, no one has raised their hand or sent, sent me anything in the chat, so.
Okay. Um, hearing none, I'll close the public portion of the hearing and we will go into executive session. So at this point, let's, uh, let's have, let's, the board discuss it a little bit. And, um, and if there's no discussion or if somebody would like to make a motion, that's fine. Can you, would you mind taking down the site plan so we can see everybody on the screen? Thank you.
I was, I was gonna ask that.
Okay, so, board members, any questions, any discussion? And I guess this may ask, um, what are we gonna be voting on now? We're gonna be voting on the two strips of drive? Are we gonna be voting on, on both filling in the drive and not? Are we just gonna leave it the way it is? What's your, what's your choice?
Um, Mr. Chair, are you asking the applicant or the board members?
Well, no, I'm asking, right now I'm asking you. So and then we'll have a discussion on whatever.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Richard and Kathy, you thought that filling it in was a good idea. If the board was in favor, they just didn't wanna prejudice their application with another variance.
That's fine.
That's, that's what their concern was.
Okay, all right. So now, board members, let's discuss this. Any comments?
So if we, if we go that way, is it, is it two variances? One, the original application with the variance for two separate driveways?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's.
I believe it is. Is that, that's, is that correct, Derek?
I believe it is too.
Yeah.
And, and then we would vote on a second variance of filling in and increasing the impervious.
Yes, I believe, I believe that's correct.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
So I think you would do the original app, you know, two separate driveways first.
Oh, yeah, certainly, certainly.
But it had been phrased the other way around a couple times.
Yeah. So that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
It has to be, it has to be the two separate driveways, for sure.
So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with proceeding that way.
Okay, um, any other board members wanna comment?
I, I wanna say, um, that one of the neighbors, and I'm sorry, I didn't see raised hand, but one of the neighbors did, um, apparently raise hand and say that they fully support the plan. And, um, I will say that I also feel like it's a very thoughtful plan and, uh, I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay, Karen, do we need to hear from that neighbor? Or can we take, uh, Eve's, uh, word for it and make that part of the record?
Well, I mean, we, we don't know who the person is or their address. So if, if we're, if we're going to get down to that detail, then I guess we should ask that person to, uh, to confirm that if they're still out there.
They're in chat and they're at twenty-seven Mason Drive, and they said they fully support the proposed plan in writing.
They're under panelists now, so if you can hear us.
Hello?
Yes.
Uh, yes, this is Yevgeny. We live at twenty-seven Mason Drive, which is right next door to fifty-one.
Yes.
And we fully support the proposed plan. We like the two driveway idea and we really, really, really love the idea that the current vegetation, especially the trees, will remain as they are.
And sir, could we get your last name, please?
Sure, our first name is Yevgeny, last name Miginsky, twenty-seven Mason Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And if I can make one more quick comment?
Sure.
If, if the, uh, the second vote is the, uh, I, I, idea to fill in, uh, the ribbon, I, I guess as it was called, I hope it will remain optional and not will be mandatory to fill it in at construction.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now, no other people in the audience who wanted to speak? Eve?
I.
Okay, so.
I missed that one, so, but I, I see no one else.
Okay, good. Let's go back to the board comments or a motion.
Well, I'd like to say that I think that it's, um, the, the green infrastructure that's being implemented here, I think is very, very wise. And I'm totally in favor of all the, uh, aspects that, uh, Eunice has put in here. I think it's beautiful and I think, um, we should have more of this type of stuff going into our community 'cause I think it's very, very beneficial. So I'm, I'm in favor of the plan, um, uh, all in.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna make a motion?
I move, we accept.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so this is a motion for the two separate driveways?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, what do we have?
I'll second it, sure.
Are there any comments? I'd like to just make one. I think the two, I think the two separate driveways are a very good solution. I think from a drainage standpoint, I think the whole system is well-thought-out. I'm not an advocate of increasing impervious coverage. Don't get me wrong here, but I just think from a practical standpoint, over the years, that will end up being compacted. That's why I'm, again, suggesting, that's why I did suggest the, the, the paved area in there. So, and, and again, my feeling is if they choose not to do it, it's just fine.
Steve, I feel like you're saving them having to come back a couple.
Well, that's exactly what it is. Oh, you know, in X number of years, when somebody says, well, you're over, you, you know, you're, it's all, it's all compacted and it's, uh, you know, water's running right across it. So, all right, I, it's it. Okay, so let's vote on the, we have a, a motion and a second. Let's vote on that first.
Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Cannonball?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, um, does, uh, somebody wanna make a motion on the increase in impervious coverage to allow the strip between the, the two sections of paved driveway to be paved?
Steve, we, we need to get some kind of idea. Since it's a variance, we just can't say pave it. We need to say if they're gonna be at twenty percent when the requirement's nineteen or if it's a hundred feet over there, we need some kind of number.
Okay, well, Tom, who I saw just got up and walked away. Uh, maybe Tom O'Shea can give us that number.
I, I, I'm, I'm out with my scale now, Steve.
Eric, a question for you. Um, if the applicants waited to do the connection on the ribbon, is there, is that open-ended in terms of when they can do that?
Uh, grant the variance, I'm sorry. Speaking of turn.
Yeah, forget if it lasts a year. They last a year in the borough and I have to check on the township.
Okay, so wouldn't, it's really not totally open-ended? They would have a time constraint in terms of when, um, they would do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, what, what would that be, Derek? You looking that up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Approximately four hundred square feet more.
Okay, and what is, what percentage does that increase it?
So, hold on a second. It's less than a percent, it's a fraction of a percent.
So it's a one-year period for the variance?
One year?
Fire after that.
Okay, that's fine.
So Tom, are you saying it's a one percent increase or less than a one percent increase over the existing requirement?
It is less than one percent. So it would, it would take you up to, the, the impervious surface is twenty-two and a half percent for the lot. Uh, it would take you up to less than twenty-three percent.
All right. Derek, is that satisfactory?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Um, is there any discussion on that with the board? And if none, would someone like to make a motion?
I, I move approval of a variance to fill in between the two tracks, uh, to a, an pervious cover, not to exceed, uh, what was the number, twenty, twenty-three percent?
Well, it'll be twenty, I think twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three percent, not, not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed twenty-three percent, sure.
I'll second that motion.
Great. Okay.
Second?
Alan.
Okay, Claudia?
Olson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Cannonball?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, well, thank, thank you very much. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Should be very nice.
We really appreciate it and we also appreciate your thoughtfulness and thinking through that extra variance. We, we do appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, just have, give me one second, I gotta get back to another screen here. Okay. Okay, our next, our next application is forty-four Wee Chief Lane, block seventy-six oh one, lot twenty-three in the R five zone, and it's application number Z twenty-one dash oh oh six. Is the applicant here?
Yeah, the applicant is me, Mike, Mike Schorpion.
Well, you appear to be here, so that's fine.
Is your attorney gonna be part of the meeting, sir?
Yeah, there is a, there is a team. I don't know how they will come on. So that's, uh, Mr. Richard Schatzman, David Smith, um, Ralph Inelli, and I think, uh, one more person. But I don't know how they, are they?
Could you say the names again, please?
So I see David Smith coming on, that's him.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Richard Schatzman may actually be with it. David, is Richard with you?
Yes.
Yeah. We're all here.
You're all here, okay. So Ralph is also there.
Yeah, Ralph?
Who's missing?
Ralph Finelli.
Ralph Finelli, yeah. He all. There he is, he's coming on, I see him coming on, yeah. Ralph?
Is that everyone?
All right, and you also have.
And John, yeah, and John McDonald, yeah. Yeah, I think we're all on.
We're on.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I, I'll indicate for the record, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
Thank you.
Derek, would you like to, uh, give us a summary of your memo?
Yes, sir. Uh, the applicant, Mark Schorpion, is the owner of forty-four Wee Chief Lane. It's located in the R five zone. Is seeking, uh, variance under the C two criteria to permit construction of a new home, an exception to the required lot area, lot width and frontage. Additional variances are requested for side yard setback, carport setback and height to setback ratio. Uh, the subject lot is non-compliant with respect to the required lot area of twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square feet. The existing lot is eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet. It's not complying with respect to the required one hundred foot lot width. The existing is seventy feet and the frontage requirement is one hundred. The existing is, again, seventy-five feet, excuse me. Um, the subject, the existing house are, is not complying with respect to the right side yard requirement of fifteen feet. The existing is four point four five. It's not complying with the left side yard requirement of fifteen feet. The existing is nine point four two. And the required one-to-one height to set back on both sides is non-compliant. The applicant is. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing house and construct a new two-story, 3,322-square-foot single home, family home. The home will feature front-loading, two-car carport, covered front porch, great room, den, storage, four bedrooms and two and a half baths. So the subject, uh, mod is non-complying and the variances for the proposed project are as follows. The lot area requirement's 21,780 square feet. The existing lot area is 11,175 square feet. The lot width requirement is 100, whereas the existing is 75. The lot frontage is also 100. The existing is again 75. The right yard setback requirement's 15. The proposed is 12 and, uh, the left side requirement is 15 and the proposed is also 12. The height to setback ratio on the right side is one-to-one and the proposed is 1.41-to-one. And the left side again is 1.1-to-one and the proposed is 1.5-to-one. And the carport setback requires that carports and garages be set back 16 feet from the front part of the nearest portion of the front facade. Um, that's section 10B254D1A. And this is actually set 13 feet in front of the front facade of the house. They're requesting C2 variance relief and that's a quick synopsis of my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from about, from Derek? Okay. Please proceed.
I have, and I, does this comply with floor area ratio for that zone?
You speak a little louder, George?
Does this comply with floor area ratio for that zone?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Your, your, your next witness?
Yeah. Tonight we have David Schmidt, the engineer. We'll briefly go over some engineering issues. We have John McDonough, the planner, will give you your reasons for the C2 variance. And.
I'm sorry. Can you, maybe it's just me, but can you speak a little louder?
All right, David Schmidt.
Oh, there you go.
All right, I'm yelling.
Richard, you never have a prob, you've never had a problem before projecting here, so.
So we have David Schmidt, the engineer, very briefly will go over some engineering items. We have John McDonough, a professional planner, will go over this, the, uh, positive criteria and then the lack of the negative criteria for C2, as well as some C1, uh, items he'll talk about. And Ralph Finelli will give us a view of what the house looks like. For you to have an informed decision on whether entitled, where we're entitled for a C2 variance. So, uh, as per a request, uh, by Ms. Casey, uh, if you swear in, Mr., uh, and, and the applicant will also just briefly comment a couple of things. So we'll have Mr. Schmidt, uh, Mr. Finelli, Mr. McDonough and Mr. Scorpion be sworn in if you please on the miscellaneous.
Or, uh, gentlemen, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Mr. Schmidt, you want to give us the benefit of your professional, uh, training?
Uh, I'm David Schmidt. I have 35 years' experience in land development.
You, you've, unless any of the board members have a question, David's testified for us before and we recognized him as an expert witness. So I'm very comfortable with him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And of course you prepared these plans or the plans were prepared under your direction?
That is correct.
You visited the site?
That is correct.
You're, you're familiar with the National Land Use Law of State in New Jersey?
That's right.
And the Land Development Ordinance of Princeton?
That is correct.
Proceed with your testimony, please, on some engineering items?
Um, I will. I have to say, I had, uh, all the variances and jotted down, but I agree with everything that Derek said. Uh, he cited them all correctly, so I'm not going to go redo all those variances. Uh, and we also have John McDonough is also gonna nail them home, so I'm not gonna go over those. I like to share a screen if I could do that. Have you guys got it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Kind of describe what that is. Okay, this is, um, this is Mark Scorpion, Princeton K C 21006. The property is 44 Wheat Chief, Princeton, New Jersey, block 7601, lot 23. We're in the R5 zone. Uh, this is, uh, an exhibit which was a plan that was submitted to the planning, uh, for the zoning board. Uh, it's entitled a variance plan prepared for lot 23, block 7601, dated December 30th, 2020, last revised April 6th, 2021, as prepared by this office.
So we call this exhibit A1? Is that acceptable?
May 26, 2021.
Okay.
Okay. Proposed project, the applicant has proposed to construct a two, a new two-story, single-family home on the property in place of the existing one-story, single-family home that is intended to be demolished. I have right now, when you're looking inside of the screen is the proposed lot over to the, I just moved over to the left. This existing frame store, frame dwelling, um, the existing house is pretty much going in the same location. I'm just gonna zoom in on the proposed lot. Proposed new dwelling will have a carport, will, with sufficient space to provide two parking spots. Uh, stormwater management, uh, plan is not required because there's only a 40 square feet increase in impervious surface coverage. Uh, per your ordinance, increase of 400 square feet or more triggers Princeton stormwater regulation. Um, and the drainage patterns for the existing lot are the same drainage pattern for the proposed lot. Um, what we tried to do with, uh, Ralph Finelli and myself, the engineering plot plan and architectural plan was designed to fit seamlessly into the neighborhood. So a lot of thought was given what is existing and we're trying to propose and replicate, uh, what is out there right now. Um, as Richard Schatzman went over, we have John McDonough, professional planner, and Ralph Finelli, the architect, to provide testimony on the C1 hardship, both variances for section 10B246 and section 10B, uh, dash 254B1A. Um, the proposed well-in is located in the same location as the previous dwelling, thus no ecological or environmental change to the property. The impervious surface coverage, as I said, will slightly increase, but will not generate any adverse impact from, from the previous use. The drainage patterns will remain the same. Most of the drainage flows from the north of the existing, the north of the existing stream. So basically, I don't know, you see my pointer on here, but in the front of the lot is where it breaks. Little water does run to Wheat Chief Lane, but the majority of the water runs to the back, the stream that is entitled Harry's Brook. Um, the property can, contains a stream, so Harry's Brook, we have a 100-year flood plain. We also have what is called a flood hazard, um, that is existing on the property. And I added it, uh, to the plans in accordance with FEMA map. And, um, in the rear of the plot, there's a dotted line at elevation 93, which shows the flood plain. And in the rear behind the house, we also have flood hazard, which is one foot above a foot plane, which is at elevation 94. Um, the property also has to have a 50-foot repairing buffer is required from the stream top of bank. Um, freshwater wetlands do not exist on the property as identified by NJDEP. Uh, they identified the stream in the rear yard as state open waters. All improved, all proposed improvements are outside these regulated areas. A formal submission was made to NJDEP for proper permits and verification. Uh, in discussion I had with NJDEP last week, our applications are in order, site visits were made and we should have a permit issued by, uh, July 14th, 2021. So you have the house in the rear, you have the flood plain, flood hazard and the 50-foot repairing buffer just skirts outside the proposed house. So we're not impacting any G, the NJDEP regulated areas. And I am getting, uh, a letter from the flood hazard. I'm getting a letter from freshwater wetlands. Um, that will demonstrate that we're in compliance with the NJDEP regulation. Um, the existing property is currently serviced, uh, by public sewer, public water, gas, electric and local telephone. Proposed well-in will access utilities utilized in the same service lines wherever possible. Um, residential garbage is collected by curbside pickup on a weekly basis. Um, so that's just of my testimony on this property. Uh, we're not impacting the adjacent properties with any, uh, drainage to the left or the right, which is west of east. Um, all the waters being directed to the, or I'd say 90% of the water is being directed to the existing Brook. We're not impacting, uh, Harry's Brook in, in any way, uh, with just a 40, 40 square foot of, uh, impervious surface increase. And, um, most of this water, uh, that is considered by NJDEP standards like the house, which roof runoff, the walkways, is all considered clean water. So we're, we're not, uh, really depositing dirty water to Harry's Brook. So it's mostly clean water and the 50-foot repairing buffer is there to cleanse whatever water, uh, it receives before getting to the stream. So I think it's, it's compliant with the DEP regs. Uh, it's compliant with the, the township regulations. And that's pretty much the testimony I have, uh, for this application.
Could you bring up, uh, can you, uh, put the proposed site plan on, on the screen?
That's what this is right here.
I'm sorry?
That's what this is right here.
This, what we're seeing is a proposed site plan?
No, Dave, what's on the screen is the existing site plan.
It just says it's a one-story frame dwelling.
All my screen.
Hello? What we see on your screen?
But it's not on my screen.
Yeah. What we, what we see is the existing survey.
You've gotta, you've gotta move it over a little bit, cause we have, um.
It moving?
Yeah, the, the, when you share the screen, the, uh, the picture portion of the screen moves to the right-hand side and cuts off your drawing. So you've gotta move it over a little bit so we can see it.
Are you, is there any effect of moving it?
You can't see it.
Maybe reduce the percentage? Dave, I'm gonna say that what you're moving is not what you're sharing. You're sharing a different screen. You've got a PDF.
You can all, you can all see it?
You've got a PDF that's up that just is showing, uh, the, the survey.
Yes, and that's exactly right. Yeah.
Well, it's, it's showing half the sheet.
It's showing half the sheet. We need the other half sheet.
Right. Yeah. It's.
Does that work?
Um, yes, it does. Great.
Got it?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, I, since I did a little bit of my testimony, I'll, I'll go over this again. On the rear of the house, we have the, you seen my cursor all by the 93 contour in the rear of the house, which is a 100-year flood plain. You have the 94 contour, the rear house, which is the flood hazard. And then 50 feet from the top of bank, which is located by a survey group, we have this, uh, dashed line right behind the house, which is the repairing buffer, which we're staying out of, um, all the NJDEP regulated areas. And the drainage all flows and wraps around the house to Harry's Brook.
So on the screen now, the shaded, the solid shading, the darker one, is the second floor and the lined portion of the shading is the first floor?
That is correct. The dwelling feeds the right of the plan, um, and you hit it correctly.
I see it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions about this? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. McDonough, please. You want to give the, uh, board, uh, your qualifications and professional background?
Good thing. Uh, and Dave, maybe you want to stop sharing screen, cause I think I'm gonna take over now.
I was gonna ask you that question.
Yes.
Got it. There you go.
So, hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough and that's spelled M-C, capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H, and I am the project planner.
And we will accept you as an expert witness. We, uh, you were just with us, uh, a, a short while ago.
For better or worse, yes, I was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, now you're familiar, of course, with the Land Development Ordinance of, uh, Princeton?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar, of course, with the National Land Use Law of State, yours is correct?
Correct.
And you visited the site?
Yes, I have.
And reviewed the plans, the architectural plans and Mr. Schmidt's plans, correct?
That is correct.
Want to now give us the, uh, and the master plan, of course? Um, you want to give us, uh, your reasons for why the board should grant us a C2 variance, a flexible C2, uh, as it relates to this application and the lack of the negative criteria of the 4055D7? Okay?
Sure thing. Uh, and with that lead in, we'll, we'll form our planning conclusions here first, starting with the practical side of the application. We'll use some visuals in that regard, some maps and some photographs. And so, Mr. Chairman, with, with your permission, I'd like to share the screen and.
Sure.
There are several exhibits?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll start again with the practical side of this application and then we'll go into the more technical aspects of the, the legal proofs that the applicant needs here. But what you'll see with, I guess we'll call this A1.
I think we're A2.
Okay.
May 26, 2021.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. So A2, and it's going to be a series of 11 slides. So I'll refer to them as A2 Sheet 1, A2 Sheet 3, and so on. Uh, Sheet, uh, A, I'm sorry, A2 Sheet number one is going to be a simple tax parcel map, which shows the subject property outlined in yellow. It is a single tax lot, block 7601, lot 23, which as you've heard, is an undersized lot. It is 11,175 square feet versus 21,780 square feet being required in the zone. It has a lot width of approximately 75 feet, whereas 100 feet is the minimum lot width and lot frontage requirement. In terms of this surrounding area, you can see that the lot size is somewhat typical of the neighborhood. We have similarly sized lots, particularly in terms of width. In terms of the surrounding road, we're looking at, uh, with, Wheat Chief is a residential cul-de-sac that serves approximately 26 or so lots. And again, they are all similarly sized and we'll see that they're similarly developed with, with homes. It's a very nice neighborhood. Uh, we'll get into the quality of the neighborhood as, as we go forward. Second slide on A2 shows the build-out condition of the neighborhood. Um, and again, the 26 or so homes that are serviced by Wheat, uh, Chief, Chief Lane. I will get that right before we're done. Again, a nice mix of homes and we'll see, we'll actually have some drone photographs of the subject property as well and the surrounding area to give a sense of, of context here. The subject site is developed with a one-family home since 1950 per the tax card. It's a one-story ranch. I see no garage on it presently under the current condition and is certainly not contributing any aesthetic value to the site and to the neighborhood, as we'll see as, as we go through. Importantly, we're going to come back to this exhibit here because one of the variances that the applicant is seeking relief for is to not have a driveway that is recessed relative to the front of the house. The applicant is actually looking to have the garage extend in the front of the house, which I would offer is not atypical for the street. This is a street that does have a nice variety of forms and build out of these houses. Uh, the recess garage, the 16-foot recess is something that I don't see on many, if any, of these homes in the neighborhood. I actually do see more with the, the garage structure in the front. So I think there is some compatibility here and, and harmony in terms of what the applicant is proposing to do. Third sheet under A2 is simply a color coding of the MOD 4 Land Use Classification System. We're not here for used variants, but the, the point here is it's all the same land use characteristic. It's all this gold color, uh, which is intended to represent residential uses. So again, a residential use in a residential neighborhood. Likewise, the zoning reflects the existing land use pattern. We're here in the R5 zone. All of the surrounding lots are zoned similarly as well. And so now, A, uh, A2 Sheet number five, or Frame number five, takes us down onto the ground level. And so now, A2 Sheet number five, or Frame number five, takes us down onto the ground level, taking a look at the subject house from several vantage points. You get a sense of the condition of the property, a one-story ranch that is presently non-conforming with respect to setbacks on both sides. The applicant is going to improve that as part of the application, which goes towards planning goal for providing adequate light, air, and open space. Frame number six under A2 is just more of a head-on view, the last view was somewhat to the left. This is a head-on view, and then A7 is what you see slightly to the right. There is a driveway with broken-up asphalt to the right, but no garage, per se, and actually a drop-off that we see on the property as we do work our way to the end of, of that particular driveway. Suffice, suffice it to say, it is a building that is not contributing positively to the landscape. We also see that in the analytics that are reflected in your tax cards and the assessed value here. One thing planners sometimes look at is the improvement to land ratio, or the IL ratio. Here, we have a very, very low improvement to land ratio. Generally, we look for a two-to-one ratio as an indicator of viability. Once we start to get below one-to-one, that's an indicator of a need for redevelopment. It's actually 0.16 here to one, so a very strong indicator of a need for redevelopment. Most of the homes on the street here are in that two-to-one range, which is an indicator of viability. So visually, and also, I'll say analytically, this is an anomaly in the, in the street in terms of the way it presently exists. Frame number eight, under A2, now floats you up into the air, looking down at the subject property, and in the following frames, the subject site is all going to be centered within the, the photograph. So again, you can see the one-story ranch. I think it's clear to say this is a very nice, leafy neighborhood, and as part of the application here, we're not looking at the clearing of a forest. In fact, we're looking to add four shade trees to add to the, I'll say, the biomass of the area, and create additional shading on, on this particular site. The driveway is now to the right, it's going to be proposed to the left, and those setbacks that you see presently non-conforming now are going to be improved, and the application is going to make them better than they presently exist, which will improve the relationships to the homes to the left and to the right, and a better integration of this site with the surrounding neighborhood. Importantly, there are environmentally constrained areas in the back of the site, is a stream, as you just heard through Dave's testimony, flood area not being impacted at all as part of this application, that all stays intact, and I think that was very important as part of my planning consideration, that the application is not going to violate any of the rear flood area regulations that are on the site. Likewise, the application is going to comply with the front setback requirement, so not looking for substantial relief related to the front or the rear, and as you heard at the outset, no relief being requested for the floor area related to this application as well. This is a view looking to the north. Frame number A9, we're now just going to spin the drone around, is now looking back to the east, and the subject site there with the white roof is in the middle, again, just underscoring how nice a, a leafy neighborhood this is. We do have in the foreground here, some recess on the building that you see in the lower level, but in other areas, we see that the, the actual garages and the driveways do extend in front of the house, not with this recess. So there's variety in the area, it's, it's a mix. Frame 10, under Exhibit A2, now takes us to, I'll say, the reverse view, looking from the back of the house, which is in the middle, again, you see that landscape truck in the front for orientation, giving a sense of the mixed nature of driveways and, and garages, and the lack, I'll say, of recessed garages on this particular street. And then finally, this is going to be the last view here, under A2, which is now turning around and looking to the west. Subject site in the middle, again, giving a sense of the varied nature of the surrounding land use context, and how the proposal here is looking at something that is going to generally follow the mass and scale and the, the build-out of the neighborhood, and not proposing anything that's overly large or unusual, and certainly is going to improve the, the visual quality of the site, importantly, while maintaining the integrity of that stream in the back of the property. I think I'll just hover over frame eight while I go through the, the proofs here. But in terms of what the applicant is proposing, is to raise this existing dwelling, instruct a new dwelling in the same basic location with the same basic coverage that presently exists there now. The building, as you'll hear through the architect's testimony next, is going to have nice contemporary appearance. It's going to be two stories, which again, I think is more in line with many of the homes that we see in the street. Again, it's a, a nice mix of one- and two-story homes. Four bedrooms here, not oversized in the context of the neighborhood, and there will be that two-car carport in the front of the, the dwelling, not a garage, per se, so this is not going to be, I'll say, an obtrusive structure in the front of the site, but it will have that open-sided aspect to it. No major site modifications here, no major or significant earthwork, no tree removal, and as I said, staying outside of the flood area. In terms of the relief that the applicant is seeking, I think the first few are, are obvious here, under the hardship standard. Here in the R5 district, the use is permitted in the zone, the existing site is non-conforming as to lot area, lot width, and side setbacks, and, and the height ratio. Basically, can't fix the lot dimensional requirements now, those adjacent lots are clearly developed, and no more room to give. And again, based on that first frame that we showed here in A2, maintaining harmony with the neighborhood in terms of the overall lot size.
Mr. McDonough, just, just a quick question, Mr. Bridger, in his memo notes that the lot behind is, is not non-conforming, or is it? You said that lots on either side are developed and non-conforming anyway, what about the one to the rear?
The lot to the rear, actually, there are two lots to the rear that, that are cure the lot with deficiency, could potentially cure the lot area. But again, this is a, is a lawfully platted lot, it is an existing lot that maintains nice harmony, I'll say, with the neighborhood, and the back of the lot logically follows the, the physical feature or the stream, which is what defines the back of the lots on, on the street as well.
Mr., in this case, Mr. Scorpion will testify as to his inquiry of the lot in back of this, whether he could gain more area for bringing the lot up to the lot area requirements of the R5 zone, okay?
Thank you, yes, and and anyone, feel free to jump in as I go with a question. In terms of the site betterments here, the new construction will certainly add, add value and quality. Says my internet is unstable, I hope the storm here is not going, if I drop, I'll come back.
Mine's the same way, so.
Okay. The new construction will improve the setbacks on both sides. The new construction will comply with the coverage, with the floor area, and with the front and rear yard setbacks. In terms of the relief, there's about seven or so line items here that I'll run through, but the first is from subsection 10B dash 246, lot area, 11,175 square feet versus 21,780 square feet. To me, this clearly relates to the hardship standard as a practical difficulty related to the land and size and shape of the property as it presently lawfully exists. This is subsection A, under the C1 hardship standard, which relates to the size and shape of, of the property. And you'll hear more testimony as to the practical difficulty or the attempts to acquire additional land. Likewise, same section of the ordinance with respect to lot width and lot frontage of 75 feet versus 100 feet. We're looking at a legally, lawfully created lot here, this is not creating a new lot, where that lack of lot size, I think, may have more weight than an existing condition. Again, no available land on either side to cure those width and frontage deficiencies. Next bundle of relief relates to the side yard setbacks. On the left side, the applicant is asking for relief of 12 feet, whereas 15 feet is the requirement, but that is going to be an improvement over the existing condition, which is now at 9.42 feet. So moving the needle in the right direction, closer to conformance with the zone plan, and improving the relationship to the neighbor, giving more light, air, and open space. Likewise, on the right side, relief will also be requested for 12 feet, whereas a minimum of 15 feet is required, which is going to be an improvement over the existing condition of 4.45 feet. So again, improving the relationship with the home to the right and the light in the air. Next bundle of relief relates to the height to setback ratios, and you'll hear this more through the architectural testimony. But on the left side and on the right side, you generally look for that 45-degree angle or the one-to-one ratio. If you look at 1.5 to one on the left, and 1.4 to one on the right, you're going to see that this building does have good proportionality, good balance, and I think the overall intent to maintain, again, a good proportionately sized building is met here, and we'll hear more about that as we go through the, the visual aspects of the presentation. Lastly, is the relief related to Section 10B dash 254.21A, which is the carport setback. It's required to be 16 feet behind the front facade, it's actually proposed to be 13 feet in the front. And I would offer that relief and relief related to setbacks and related to height to setback ratio as all being justified under the C2 test, as opposed to the C1, which we use for the lot size and the lot dimensions. Here, we look at the overall site betterment.